This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Okay, we're gonna call the special public hearing meeting of the Southampton Local School Committee to Order. It is six oh five thirty-three P M. First order motion is to, or first order of business is to motion into open the public hearing on the budget, on the fiscal year twenty-three budget. Is there a motion? Seconded?
Seconded.
We're gonna go much faster, you guys just follow my lead. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Okay.
I think Deanna's gonna do a presentation.
We're presenting tomorrow.
Okay. So while they set that up, we have a strict ninety minutes, we have to stop at six fifty-nine, there's a seven o'clock public hearing. So I'm envisioning the presentation, some Q and A, the public for the first sixty minutes, and then probably suspend the public meeting, or end the public meeting. As a reminder, we can't take a vote during the public meeting, we have to be out of public meeting to vote the budget. Okay, process wise. And worst case scenario, if we cancel this tonight, we can call an emergency meeting tomorrow. But by end of business tomorrow, the budget needs to be voted on one way or the other. Okay?
So I can tell you what I have as while they're working on that, if.
Go ahead, Dr. Paul.
You can call if you want. I just have a relatively quick slideshow, and I just wanted to give you some background. So to understand our budget a little bit better, it's always good to know about our current enrollment, demographics, trends over the years, what our goals are, and how it all fits into the bigger picture. So this is a very important screen, for a number of reasons. So if you see with Norris here, as you can see, we are the largest school. We do have the lowest amount of low-income students, yet we do have the highest number of special ed students. So I've had discussions with Nancy about this, why this would be, and I think it's for a number of reasons. One, we don't have the autism program yet in place that we are proposing. I also think teachers need some strategies on how to de-escalate students. And I think the biggest one also is lack of interventions. That Eliza, Elisa, oh my God, see that guy did that. Elisa has interventionists in place, but as you know, due to budget cuts, they've been cut to part-time, and that is one of the things that she hopes to put back into the, into the budget. So when we're looking at enrollment trends, tenure trends, everybody is down. The, this is Norris, this line down here, and over the past ten years, we're actually down about eighty students. And if we just, if you just want to see the numbers. This is where we're looking over the last ten years, so we are at an all-time low. Of course, a lot of this was during COVID times, which is why it's so low. So hopefully next year, and I'm not sure what the census numbers are, but as you can see, we were at a high of five fifty-two.
Is, is this just all students or excluding school choice?
All. Yep. Another question? No? Excuse me, if I go like this. Just if you wanted to know how we compare with the other schools per grade, this is how that looks like. With the largest class size being seventy-six in grade five. Five-year trends for subgroups. So we just talked about special education and how we were the highest, but these are the trends over the last five years. And you can see the state average changes every year, but this year it is eighteen point now, eighteen point nine, and we are substantially higher at twenty-seven percent. And you can see even over COVID times, this has changed drastically. That could be for a number of reasons as well. English language, there are two schools in the district that have one point nine percent, and that is Antedumphie and Norris. You can still see that this is relatively extremely low as compared to the state average of eleven percent. And at West Hampton, there are zero, and at the high school, there are, yeah, two percent. So it must be Antedumphie that is zero. Here's just a chart in case you were looking to see where everybody was. There's Norris, there's yours. Low income, the state defines who's in low income if they receive any kind of state assistance. And this is an important category for us as well, and this is where Norris stands over the years. Norris is the lowest of all of our district schools, which is half of what the state average is. So it's important to note, highest in special education, yet lowest as far as low-income students. And look, you can see how the state average has changed tremendously since COVID times. And high needs, if any student is in special education, low income, or any combination of, of the three categories that you just saw, they're considered high needs. And Norris, this is where we stand right now, the state average is fifty-five point six, and we are at forty point eight, which is substantially higher than we were a couple of years ago. All the other schools are higher as well. I think we saw the greatest increase. Let's see. School choice, school choice is a very important revenue stream, and here at Norris, we have fifty-three students currently. And when students come into the district, the school receives at least five thousand dollars or more, depending on what special education services they receive. What's important to note is, school choice going out, the town has to pay that money. So I want to be clear, school choice in, school holds onto it, school choice out, the town pays. And we just did a survey, and I think we had eighty-two responses from school choice families. The seventy-two families were choicing in and ten were choicing out, to explain why they were coming into our district or leaving. And the biggest reasons for, for coming in were small class sizes, positive school climate, and the sense of community, and strong academic expectations. And the reasons for, for leaving, some people had moved out and they just wanted to join the local community. And one person had said lack of diversity, that her child had been the only Latina in class. So it's interesting to know. So when we look at Norris' school choice numbers over the years, so remember, fifty-three total. This fifteen means fifteen new, new students. And that's what the town pays out, one hundred and forty-four. But if we go back to some of the district goals right now, a lot of it is based on COVID outcomes. And these are some of the, I'll, I'll just do this real quick. All schools saw an increased need for social emotional support. Students have some trauma background, especially being home, they don't know how to self-regulate, interact with other students. So across the, across the board in all the schools, we saw an increased need for social emotional support, as we're also implementing social emotional curriculum across the board. So reading interventionist, so tier one is classroom teachers, tier two are these internet interventionists to help address the gap. And these are for students who are not special education, but hopefully with these interventions, we could prevent special education costs. Communication is another goal, the administrative team meets on a weekly basis, we're still continuing with our newsletters. That's just a goal that I wanted to share. Behavioral sport, this is where the program that we've already talked about, we'll address later on tonight, the neurodiversity program. Nancy gave a wonderful presentation last week about it. But if we have these additional behavioral supports, it'll really be more proactive than being reactive to meeting student needs. That when students act up in a classroom, right now, we have one, one specific special education teacher that assists the teacher along with the vice principal in handling these behaviors, but oftentimes, the whole class has to evacuate due to one disruptive student. So having a full-time behavioralist would be very beneficial to the school. Right now, out of contracted services, we do pay for B C B A. Thirty, around thirty-six thousand dollars, and thirty of it comes from the budget, and the other six is from grant funding. But that person is not here every day, doesn't really interact with the, with the faculty. It's not there like home base or their community. So I think there's a lot of support we could be getting from a B C B A whose home base was here at school full-time. Fastbridge is just our local assessment that all the schools have been using, and Elisa was actually the, the one to really bring Fastbridge to the forefront. And it's really critical in assessing student needs and seeing who needs intervention supports. So as administrators, we've been talking about that quite a bit. If we do get the one-two-three grant, which we have not heard yet, so I'm not very optimistic right now, we would like to do some K through twelve math curricula alignment. And that would include professional development for teachers, bringing instructional coaches into the classrooms, and really helping teachers train to transition to inquiry-based practices. And if we don't get the grant, we still believe in this model, but it will really, really be downsized to the level of support that we can offer, offer teachers. But we will still carry on. A strategic plan, that's just what I'm working on. Once I write my entry plan, the next step after that is the strategic plan. It's the vision of the school for the next three years. And the past month, I visited all the schools to do an activity with all the faculty about core values. And yesterday, we finished with the high school, and that was a lot of fun. But some of the core values I've put into a parent survey, which you can read about in the next newsletter. But people will have to vote from fifteen core values down to five, like perseverance, teaching students empathy. They're the core values that we expect students to have before they graduate high school. And as far as the budget process goes, some of the big drivers that are really driving this are salary increases. As, as you know, that plays a tremendous role. The effects of COVID, the need for the extra interventionist and school adjustment counselors and B C B A. Transportation costs, which Bobby will talk about later, but those are way higher than we had ever anticipated when the bid went out. And special ed costs are always high and unknown. So we're hoping with the behavioral neurodiverse program that we could prevent special ed costs from rising at, at older grades and prevent out-of-district placements as well. Some of the other factors that really do influence our budget are, we really aren't sure of, of COVID. We're hoping that it's over, but there's no, obviously, there's no guarantees on that. The inflation rate has changed, and for chapter seventy formula, they use four point five percent. So legislators have been working diligently to, to try to get that increased, as well as to give rural schools a incentive such that they do for urban schools as well. But we haven't heard if we've gotten that yet at all. So we don't know about rural aid. And S R grant money does expire in twenty-twenty-four. It would be great if that money continued, it was such a huge relief for districts. But that, a lot of districts have used that to fund, to fund positions that will not be available anymore after a couple of years. So that's just the highlight of where we are as a district. And then if you guys want to take it away, I don't know if anybody has any questions? I can send this to you, but it's a hundred and thirty-eight slides. I don't think you'd be interested.
Anybody have any questions on this part? Anybody in the public? This, it's a public pre for all, so anybody?
Thanks, Sean.
Okay, well, I know. I looked around first. Next up?
All right, so I don't know if you need hard copies or not, this was sent to you. So what, what these packets are is there's three different budgets. There's one, which is the level service, which had a few changes over the previous presentation that we had. And then the second is with the request that we had, and the third will be with the neurodiversity program. I don't know if you want me, because it is a public presentation, to go line by line, but if you do, I think I'll do it with the neurodiverse program budget one.
That's the one with the full ask?
Full ask.
So that includes with request plus neuro?
Correct, yep.
That's the most expensive option.
Yep. And so we have the, even level service was a four point four-two, and the with request is a nine point three-eight, and with the program is a ten point five-nine. There is one caveat with that, if we do get the ARPA monies to fund the program that we requested, the request with the middle one, we could actually reduce the sped contract service line in that one. So that could go down slightly if that gets funded.
So there were, there were four requests for ARPA funds. And so in year one, the cumulative value of that is what?
I can tell you one moment.
And I'm assuming it repeats in year two?
That halfway through, because it only goes to December.
Okay.
So it would be September to December, and then we'd have to budget for, or pick up the remaining of the year for the second year. So it wouldn't be a full year, it would be like a half.
Fifty percent of whatever you want, okay.
Yep. And it's, uh, yeah, because you have the professional development in your ask, and I don't have that in these budgets.
Yeah, I'll tell you though, because I haven't saw that. It's a hundred and fifteen, sixteen, sixteen.
A hundred and forty-six, a hundred and forty-seven plus T D.
Okay, so if that would, if for some, if level service plus, that includes the neurodiversity was approved, and then the ARPA money was approved, the ARPA money would come in somewhat to like a grant, right? It would be an offset revenue that would reduce the burden on the town per se. Okay.
And I don't know when those requests are gonna be.
We, the, the first round, they, they start being reviewed on April fifth, and it'll be open until twenty-twenty-four or all the money is spent.
All right, so if we do the line by line with the neurodiverse program, the first three quarters of the first page is the central office budget, which has been presented early on at all five school committees so that they had a chance to see that budget as a whole, and before anybody got to vote on any budget.
So that section for all three budgets is consistent?
Correct.
It's two point nine-two percent?
Correct, yep. And then starts the next section is the instruction, and this is all level service, it's just contractual increases. Second page is the.
Yeah, I didn't see the assistant principal.
It's in, I did not put it in the budget, I put it in school choice.
Okay. That's why I was curious.
I was kind of unclear of, of what I was supposed to do there from the last time. So I mean, something's gonna go, we know that. So it's not in this budget.
But in that, in that second section, where, where we start with, with the faculty, right? There isn't, there is an increase, there's an extra in there, the library, right? Because the current budget's at zero, and this is fully funded.
Yep. So if you, if you, from the level service, what's increased with the neurodiverse program is that you have the library tech teacher, that's reinstated. We had them budgeted at a point two for F Y twenty-two, so it's a point eight increase. The two nurses are in at full-time, and they're budgeted in the budget, not S R two or S R three. Reinstate the special ed team leader from a point nine back to a one point O. Reinstate the psychologist from a point nine to a one point O. Increase the math intervention from a point five to a one point O. Increase tech supplies by four thousand. The adjustment counselor who was in the S R two funding is back in the budget. And then the assistant principal went to school choice, no longer from S R two or S R three. And if you want the standings on the S R grant while we're there, we have spent entirely S R two and S R three of the two-hundred-and-forty-four thousand, one-hundred-and-three, we have a hundred-and-sixty-one thousand, six-eighty-six left. That's not to say that we could, we could use the entire one-sixty-one towards salaries, if it was teaching salaries, because we have to factor in the nine percent that we have to pay for instructional salaries. But if we were to pay, say, paris salaries, we don't have to factor in that nine percent.
Yep. And that, that remaining balance of one-sixty-three takes into account everything you need to finish out this school year?
Yes, everything's encumbered for this school year, yep. Yep. So, and then the neurodiverse program is the B C B A increase from a point five to a one point O for thirty-eight thousand, five-hundred-and-seventy. Special education teacher at a one point O for seventy-seven thousand, three-thirty. A paraprofessional for, which would be one that will have specialized training, thirty thousand, one-sixty-five. And then it would include reducing sped contract service line by eighty-seven thousand, four-hundred, because we wouldn't need to outsource for the R B T and the B C B A. What this does not include is the professional development for the neurodiverse program. That's not included in any of these budget scenarios, because I didn't see that until last.
And what's that number?
So when I divided between F Y twenty-three and twenty-four, the total for F Y twenty-three is roughly a hundred-and-sixty-seven thousand, and for twenty-four, it's roughly eighty-one thousand.
Not for professional development?
Just, just professional development.
No, he's, he's ready to have a second. Sorry. He just wants to know, how much did you put in the ARPA for professional development?
Twenty-two thousand.
Thank you.
Oh my, that's a lot of P D.
You guys are gonna learn a lot. Okay.
But I just want everybody to be clear, so although we're asking for a hundred-and-sixty-seven for next year through ARPA funds, if, if all those are denied, eighty-seven thousand of that would still come out of the budget, like Bobby said, to pay for the B C B A and for the R B T, which is a, it's kind of like a super-trained paraprofessional that handles student discipline and monitors student data. So that's the eighty-seven that would come out of there.
And that's because those are contracts right now with outside services that we would terminate in lieu of this in-house program. So it would be the one-sixty-seven cumulative for ARPA, which includes professional development, and that one-sixty-seven number plus the eighty-three?
The one-sixty-seven, I don't believe includes the. Oh, it does, sorry.
Okay. So the, the new, new row diversity is really two-hundred-and-forty-ish thousand dollars?
For two years with ARPA funds.
So one-twenty a year for, well, no.
Not, not really, the, the overall cost for this year, so if you, if, if I had to look at the budget just for this year, that program is a hundred-and-sixty-seven thousand for next year.
For F Y twenty-three.
Right, it'll be less expensive the following year, because you're not gonna have the P D costs. And I think for some, oh.
We're doing the four months.
Yeah, that's why, that's why it's reduced.
So what, so if we were to get the full amount of the ARPA money of the one-sixty-seven for the twelve-month cycle, the eighty-seven thousand dollars that would be saved wouldn't be going to that program, it's been repurposed throughout the budget somewhere else.
So you would take your third budget with the neurodiverse program, and you could take out a hundred and, a hundred and forty-seven, because I didn't include the twenty-two. So, yep. That'd be off the bottom.
Out of the general, yeah.
Yep. So those, that's the only changes to the instructional is the increase of the B C B A and the sped teacher and the para. Otherwise, it's just regular level service contractual increases.
You, we. Yes, and we're both wrong, both right. We're on the same page now. That was two years ago.
And then just on that same line in that contract, in the instructional section, you'd see the decrease of the sped contract service line would be thirty thousand, one-hundred-and-thirty-five as a decrease. And then tech supplies is the additional four thousand, that was with the requests. And the adjustment counselor going back into the budget. And then the other section would be the nurses that are back in whole, both, two nurses, full-time F T back in the budget itself. And then, down to the maintenance, I had talked last time about not increasing or not doing eighty thousand for the electric, but we're bumping up this year already in F Y twenty-two to eighty thousand. So I decided I better leave it there with the current prices. So I did leave that amount, but that's, you know, discussion we can have. And that's it for that section. And then your programs out of district is two-hundred-and-forty-nine, two-fifty-nine, and that's been increased since our first look at the budget. That's based on the latest numbers that I had received. And that brings us to the bottom of this one for the largest increase of ten point five. And then.
With the neurodiverse program, is there any thought that, I just, on this, specifically on this out-of-district line, that there be ability to re, bring any of those back in-house? Or at this point, do we think that that number?
It's a possibility for one, definite for one, yeah.
And are any of those currently in sixth grade?
No.
Not, not the coming back in, but over, out of this entire?
Not right now, no.
Or going into sixth, I don't know if we can discuss that level.
Right, and, and that's why I feel like I don't want to identify anybody.
That's fine. I'm just, you understand why.
Yes, yes, yes.
I got a couple of questions to clarify, so between, if we're on the full ask, last page, and then the last page for the level plus the restored cut, or what I'm calling the restored cuts, level service plus. The school choice tuition for everything is sixty-three thousand, but for level and restored cuts, it's only forty-six thousand. The one, one is saving a sixteen thousand, the other one is zero savings.
It is the, it is the forty.
Forty-six?
Yep. Yep. Oh, let me just make sure of that.
That's what's on the level and the level with restored.
He's, and I double-checked those too, guess I didn't do it very well.
You have to leave me something to find.
Yeah, it is the forty.
Six, okay, and then stay with that, this charter, charter school tuition, is it a hundred-and-fifty-two thousand or is it forty-nine thousand?
A hundred-and-fifty-two. And that's, you know, based off of what I have now for preliminary numbers, and as you know, I say it every year, those numbers change in June or could change. For instance, Indiana's slide, she had fifty-three, I think, for school choice students. My current roster shows forty-five. So.
So that number represents the revenue for the children coming into Norris?
Yeah.
Okay, and then. All right. The, on the library position? If I remember right, not to, not to name anybody, but that position originally went vacant due to a retirement. Okay. So I'm curious to understand why the salary that's in there is not a base. I'm curious to understand why the salary that's in there is not a base or step one. Master's degree, which I believe is the entry level in year three. And the number doesn't match the current C B A agreement for an entry level post, it's it's very generous, which.
Is that master step one? Oh, the guess, the ask, okay.
I'm just used to doing masters step five, so that's what I, that's what.
If you give her the money, she's gonna spend it, but could the money go somewhere else? So I guess. If there's already a person, I don't think so, I don't think there's an existing employee that's holding that job and this is matching their salary, because that's one thing. If it's an open job and we're going out to the market, shouldn't that really be?
Masters step one usually.
Yeah, librarian can't be certified without a masters.
Right, yeah, so I, even though we have the B A fifteen, we don't use that anymore, but. I think that's nine or eleven thousand dollar difference. That that's assuming that I was looking at the right contract, which. Two weeks ago, I might not have been. But I I, you know, again, I'm just throwing it out there, I'm not, I'm not saying we need to make adjustments or not anything, but that would be one area where. I think we could possibly reallocate some dollars. And then I think I understand. The staff counting. And 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 the difference. With the. Special education teacher salary. I take it that the seven ninety-five is is the right number. I just, I don't know what happened with the previous year's number. Because if I looked at the year before that, it was six ninety-four or seven oh nine. And and how we had a seventy thousand dollar savings there, I don't know, but it does make that line item at twenty-six percent increase. Right, which my concern is, is that an uneducated person will say, we gave away the store when we signed that contract. Because it looks like that particular C B A got a twenty-six percent increase. I think there's just, there's an error somewhere in history that wasn't caught, that we we need to be able to explain.
You're talking sped teacher salary, right?
That line item, because if I'm sitting on the finance side of town. Well, your s- your pet, your wages went up twenty-six percent on that line item.
Right, but it's not, it's, if I looked at what I did for um twenty-two salary. For sped teacher, it should have been.
There's also a full four F T E in there too, right?
No, there's actually no change, that's what we're saying, is that the issue is that there's, in in the one we're looking at, there is the full-blown one, yes. For the neurodiverse program, yes.
Right.
But there's a, there was also, if you looked at the level service one, there was a big increase, like seventy-eight thousand. So um, but. The teachers themselves had, and for some reason, I don't have my last page here, but it was. It should have been budgeted at more than it was.
Yeah.
And with all the iterations that were going around.
Yeah, I I just, I and I agree with you, Bobby, because if I look at the year before that, the year before that, there's a big. I don't remember a big savings in special education teachers, we didn't, there weren't openings or anything, but. We just, we need to be able to articulate this when this gets to finance on April sixth, right?
Master's base is six eight, six six six.
Six eight, six six six.
Yeah.
For twenty-two, twenty-three.
And so the budget says six thirty-two.
Course has seven seventy-three, doesn't it, say seventy-seven or something?
No, special ed teacher salary, six hundred and thirty-two thousand eighty dollars.
Sorry, I thought you were talking about um.
You're on the library tech.
We moved on. So that's about seven thousand. Oh yeah, and that one too is in it.
So then.
I put that in whatever you guys asked for the request.
So I guess if you could just revisit the the new position, I mean, there's nothing we can do if someone's going from a point eight to a point nine or ten, because their salary's already established. And if you're using folks in-house and reallocating them, then the salary's already established, but if you're pulling new folks from the outside. I'm open to argument, but when we're, when we're trying to. Nine percent is a big pill to swallow, that I don't think we can, at least, I I don't think I can vote to support that.
Don't forget Hampshire didn't go up their full two and a half.
Can they always start with masters? Even for like a library tech position? I know they have to get it, I'm not saying that.
No, they could start with a bachelor's and get their masters in five years.
They're not licensed then, librarians. Librarians, the only position above everybody else, which. Yeah, that is, yes, that's the only position in whole school.
And I, and I do, I do think the 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 intent of the last negotiations, or at least. Was that that was gonna be the entry level for a starting spot for teachers and that, that we're getting away from B As and B A fifteens.
Oh yeah, I totally do.
Yeah.
I haven't spoken, that is for high schools, you do not need a certified librarian, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Sorry.
Like at all, right?
So the library, the librarian slash media slash technology position is is brand new, is new new. No.
Right, the person that was there left, retired.
Retired, so there's nobody in there, you might do an internal posting.
At point two, only because contractually I had to give the teachers their prep time, so that's, yeah.
And then, so this would be a new position, right, you do an internal posting, and free for anybody internally to apply. Right, but but at some point, you would get to a spot where you're backfilling a spot, right? So that that would be entry level, are there any other new positions within this budget that perhaps weren't. Budgeted at a master step one. That we could see some savings?
The special ed teacher for the neurodiverse.
That's it, yeah.
Yeah. I think that was um shot high as well, so. The special ed teacher for the neurodiverse program is at seventy-seven, three thirty, but it doesn't need to be. Be master step one for base.
Which is?
Sixty-six.
Okay.
But you said sixty-eight, right?
Sixty-six.
So for each spot, that's nine thousand per position, right, so there's an eighteen, eighteen thousand dollars savings.
It is sixty-eight.
It is.
Might wanna know, I just got a text that the planning board meeting for seven o'clock has been canceled, so we're free to stay till ten o'clock, so continue. Continue on with the show, ladies. Okay, so I'm sorry, so it's sixty-six?
Sixty-eight.
Sixty-eight.
Six sixty-six.
Okay, sixty-eight thousand, and it was at seventy-seven in the budget, so that's nine thousand per position. So we've reduced the budget by eighteen thousand.
Seven thousand library tech, because that's 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 seventy-five.
Seven thousand.
Seventy-eight, sixteen thousand, John.
Sixteen K.
Final offer, done.
Alright, that's, that's what I found, what'd you find, Dylan? Anybody? I know it's it's not on the general fund, but could we, could we touch on it while everyone's looking at their notes? What about, do you have an update on transportation? We have a, I thought we had a, I thought we had a placeholder of five percent. Um, is that gonna be sufficient?
I looked at it and I believe that will be sufficient for the transportations.
And, go ahead.
Running on the buses that they're running right now.
That was gonna be my next question, so if we. In an effort to save funds, if we went to the two-mile radius, which I'm not suggesting we do. But if we went to the two-mile radius for busing, which would eliminate the number of buses needed in town. We would still have to pay for the same number of buses because of our obligation to Hampshire Regional. Correct?
Well, not if you're, if you can fit your students on, but um, you got some pretty tight buses right now.
But we're, we're at the half-mile mark. True.
Isn't transportation out of the other budget?
It i- it is separate, yes, transportation's a separate budget, but it's still a cost to the town for education.
But if towns decided that we have this percentage to work with, they've already worked that other transportation line item into a different spot.
Well, so the town took transportation out of our budget because they got into a pickle with net school spending. So it was a way to get them out of the frying pan, by pulling that out. So if we're gonna ask for more money in our budget, we, as a sign of good faith, could show a way. Reduce theirs to shift more into ours. But I'm just as, but we still have a require, I mean, we still have the same number of kids. We don't have the luxury of changing the busing for Hampshire Regional, right, because regional, you gotta bus everybody. All the Southampton kids have to be made available, whether they take it or not.
Because it's more than the mile and a half, yeah.
Right. So we still have to provide those number of buses, which then turn around and do the Southampton loop for Doris, correct?
Yeah.
So there.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if you could cancel one tier, like one bus, one tier. Um, I don't know, I've never really looked into that, I'd have to really review the contract to see if I could do that.
Okay.
Because it is based on a two-tier run, the contract.
Yeah.
I thought we did look at that like two years ago and it didn't really seem.
Right. Charge the residents, yeah, that was back in sixteen.
Yep, that was a, quite the task. And we did it, what, one year? And then they, school committee decided not to.
Right.
I mean, I know it's a tough call, it is.
And then under, just one more question on transportation, special ed transportation, the true number is ninety-seven thousand dollars?
No, well, it's the higher one.
Okay, so on the level services plus neurodiversity, the ninety-seven is what's in there.
Yeah, it's a hundred two sixty-four, hundred thousand two sixty-four.
Okay.
And that's based on the numbers that I have currently.
Those will fluctuate right up to the.
Good, yeah.
Every day.
Yep. Could add?
Sorry, it it, explain to me again how the S R three, the hundred and sixty-three thousand that's left in there can be. Is or is not being applied to this budget to offset the expenditures.
The hundred and sixty-three that's left in S R three?
Yes.
Is free to be used. Um, but we were taking it out. And then you can make your decisions.
We can see what the number is.
Okay, that's fine, I'm just trying to figure out the actual.
The town is gonna be, that's, that's. So are there, are there any other positions in school choice other than the vice principal?
There's.
Under this.
Teacher salaries of two hundred and seven thousand. Two hundred and eighty-three, five.
What, the classroom teachers?
Yeah. We always been budgeting over two hundred thousand out of school choice, which is why your school choice accounts are so very low. That's something we've been doing for years. Been over two. Probably for, since, well, I can't even say, since probably, I know you guys weren't on the committee.
We're all, we're all pups.
Why does it say school choice tuition is zero, is, don't we get money?
Which one are you looking at?
Under circuit breaker, and then it has those school choice numbers, the eighty-three, and then the two eighty-three, and then zero, zero for transportation and tuition.
Yeah, those are, we do pay for, we don't pay for school choice transportation, and the town pays for school choice tuition.
Oh, okay.
It's a separate town.
So it's not money that we're getting in?
Like, this is expenses.
Okay.
So I, I guess I would, I'd rather see those sal- those teachers, I mean. If they're, if they're the classroom teachers, right, this is, well, let me just make sure. This isn't money that's be that a an employee is doing their, their. Full workday, and then they're taking on student activities, whatever, whatever the case, something above and beyond that we're using school choice money. This is, this is omitting a hundred percent of of what we'd have to pay them regardless of whether we had school choice or not, right? So. I almost think for, for, A, for the transparency. And for educating, that that number, that two hundred thousand needs to be in those line items.
You can't.
Why?
It's, you you're, you can't use a revolving fund in your budget, in your general fund budget.
But can't we, can't we do it like, if we, if we put those positions up there, we put the money up there truly where it is, and then we just allocate it. We're just gonna take two hundred thousand dollars out of school choice money, I mean, we still take it out of school choice, but we show it. We're just taking it out and we're putting it in as an offset to the town's general obligation to us, almost like a grant line. Another revenue source.
There is that line in here under school choice.
But it, but it doesn't say.
It doesn't say.
It doesn't say that that's.
It says instructional.
Right, beca- because again, if 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 you look for the, the critics, right, who are just gonna take this on face value. They're gonna say, well, why do we have to spend more money if we're spending. What they feel is taxpayer dollars to educate fifty-three members that aren't part of this community of the town, right? But if those fifty-three members weren't coming in at five thousand dollars apiece, which is two hundred and fifty thousand. Then we wouldn't have the two hundred thousand to pay our teachers, right, so we're already behind the eight ball, but it. It doesn't clearly articulate that, I guess. And I understand what you're saying about the revolving account, but I'm also, you know, this, this ARPA money is gonna, and S R money's gonna run out in two years. So I I believe that. I believe there's support out there to help the budget for the next two years, but then we we have to be ready to go out there and just paint the picture and look for the override. There, there's no override in the next two years, I I don't see it happening, but. You know, I don't know.
I can do it any way you want outside of the budget, I just can't put the number in the budget, because. Under mass general law, it's not allowed.
Can you put it in as a revenue source? Like an alternate revenue source?
No, because we're just a department of the town, so it's not like. Yeah, it's not like a regional where you have the assessments and you actually offset those assessments to your towns with the revenue. It's one of those strange ones where it comes to the school committee.
And and maybe, maybe then the alternative course is to do an addendum to the budget, a a appendix A. That details of the two hundred thirty thousand, whatever's coming out of school choice, here's how it's being broken out, and if it wasn't here, this is the lines that it would hit. So again, it's, it's there in black and white versus just a number. Right? Because it, you know, I get, I get it, other, other towns may not get it. I fully understand support of an assistant vice principal at our school because of our size, but.
See what you're saying.
Well, I agree it shouldn't be there, but right now, that's how our predecessors set it up. So roughly two hundred thousand for teacher, for augmenting teacher salaries.
Yep, two eighty-three, yep.
Two eighty-three for teachers, and then how much for the principal, uh, assistant vice principal?
Eighty-three.
Eighty-three, six forty. So we're taking three sixty-seven out of school choice, and you said how college is coming in annually, two fifty, two sixty?
Five thousand dollars.
So we've bite into that each year.
So we're, what's the current balance in that?
It's, it's five thousand, assuming inbound is no special.
I just, I'm just saying, in general. This is, no matter how, unless, unless we're getting a lot of, you know, supported, a hundred thousand dollar deficit, right?
You're checking something else.
Okay.
Do you have any retirements this year?
I would say no, because we didn't, that line item is zeroed, or the incentive for retirement.
Possibly.
So.
Retirement, possibly.
At the end of F Y twenty-three, it would leave us with about a hundred and thirty-four. Right now, beginning F Y twenty-two, we have three hundred and thirteen, eight thirty. For school choice, but if we end up having any excess typically, what we do, or the school committee has done in the past few years. Is we start to back out the school choice to, and pay it out of the budget, if there's any monies that are left. So that could change.
But I, I mean, I know these are rough numbers, but we got next year, year and a half, maybe?
Yep.
And it's empty.
Yep.
That's not great. We're sinking.
No, and that's the.
And so the problem over the years with the budget has been, we've cut classroom teachers in order to support the needs of the students, otherwise, or cut them altogether, starting in two thousand fourteen. And so we couldn't take in as many school of choice students as we had before because we didn't wanna pack the classrooms. And now we're at that point where we have no teachers and we're not taking in school of choice students either.
So you're saying that the school choice number is not gonna go up because of our enrollment?
Well, every year I try to take in as many sixth graders that are leaving. So if there are thirteen sixth graders that are school of choice, going to seventh grade, I try to take in thirteen somewhere. I believe last year I wasn't able to take, I only took in a few kindergarten students and nobody anywhere else. But for next year, we already have openings right now in K three and five, and I'd like to take in fourteen students between K three and five.
But not sixth, next year, cause that class is gonna be gigantic.
Right, K three and five. What's the average class size? Twenty. Okay, I'm sorry. So for those grade levels that have sixteen, seventeen kids in a class, I'm asking, I have openings. But I can't take so many kindergarteners in, and then as they go up through the grade levels, or we only have three classes in some of those grade levels, you know, you know, I can't get to twenty-five either. So capital budget, budget ideas for reducing this budget, it's like, I'm half joking when I say solar panels because of the eighty thousand electric? I don't know if this is something that has been ever thought about as a capital budget investment on reducing this budget.
Will we put in our capital request already?
Right, and this is, we have to fix this, like, sinking ship long term now.
Yeah.
So. And the things that went in for capital are all things that need fixing, right?
Yeah, I mean, I wonder if we, if they do commercial leasing.
Yeah, it's like investing in something that's gonna ultimately return and reduce the budget.
Cause if you, if you do a power purchase agreement, then your rate is locked. So you know for twenty-five years what you're gonna pay, unless you, you know, use the excess.
Well, just keep in mind, I don't know if, if there, if we're under any current obligation because two years ago we did the hundred and sixty-two thousand dollar upgrade to the lighting. And the only reason why our electricity hasn't been saved is because we're running the H V A C twenty-four seven, which could be an area that we could cut back on. Potentially.
So you mean we run it overnight now?
I believe we're still running twenty-four seven since the pandemic started, right after we switched all the lights. So we've got probably ten or fifteen more minutes of the public session, if there's anybody in the public that has a question.
Just other, uh, do we, are there any positions that are currently listed in here that are, um, besides the library tech position that are not currently filled?
The ask of the other half of the math interventionist, that's an ask though.
Right, I was saying, levels, I should, so, let me, let me rephrase that. Are there any level service positions that are current, like, like the library tech position that are not current, that are budgeted for but are not currently filled?
I don't think so, nope.
I'll say here's the clock in the background. It's a little ominous.
So Bobby, if I'm looking at, at the, uh, last budget, or the one that we've been going over, and, yeah, and I go down the line two fifteen, is the total general fund.
Which is what?
Total general fund, line two fifteen.
Yep, page four, about quarter of the way down.
So general fund, it says, uh, fiscal year twenty twenty-two budget was four point eight million dollars, right? But we need, we need to confirm that number because of the, the issue identified in, in this special ed teachers line item, right? So I, I guess, we know there's an error up above, the question is, did, did, did the error happen through our data entry? What was, what was approved on the, on the?
The four that you're looking at in twenty-two, the four million eight sixty-six, two twenty-five.
Okay, that's the number those were, alright, so. Okay.
And then what, the error, or the thing that you're talking about is in the sped teacher salary, which should have been higher than it was. So what happened is probably there was a cut that was supposed to have happened and never did happen.
But, but you're, you're comfortable that four million eight hundred sixty-six, two twenty-six is what was, was what our budget that was approved and we've been working off of?
Yep, I'm, I'll double check here, just to make sure.
Which kinda makes sense, cause it comes to a point nine four percent increase.
Yep, four eight six six two two.
Okay, so with everything, with all the ask in here, including, um, funding, funding everything in the neurodiversity that was requested, that gets us to your five million, five point three eight one. Right, which is a ten point five nine percent increase. But we can reuse that number by sixteen thousand dollars by resetting the two new positions back to base.
Yep.
And then if we utilize the rema- remaining balance of S R money, that, now, does the remaining balance of S R money have to be done by the end of the next budget cycle?
No, we have to the end of twenty-four.
Two year, we have two more years. Let's just say we use, right, two more full, but is it calendar year or school years?
Uh, fiscal year, so, school year.
Okay, alright, so let's just say we use the whole amount now, because I already plugged the number in.
So say that again?
We're gonna use the whole number now, cause I plug it in, so that, that's reducing that number by a hundred and sixty-three thousand.
What are you putting it against?
Wherever you want, electricity.
Okay. I'm just saying.
Curriculum material, keep it out of wages, right, so we don't have to adjust to nine percent, so it could be curriculum, it could be the utilities, right, that are COVID related because, right? And then if we were able to get a full hundred and sixty-seven out of ARPA, and apply that to the neurodiversity line items, right?
It's gotta be one forty-five, because the twenty-two isn't in this budget for this, for the, the.
Well, we could put twenty-two, we could put, we can put one forty-five and then add the twenty-two back in, but, right, so if we add, if we add the twenty-two professional development back in.
Right, if we add it, but it's not in this number. It's not in the five one five.
So you wanna make it one forty-five?
Well, yeah, I just.
Okay. Alright, so then that gets us down to just over five million, which is, our cumulative would be a three point nine two percenting ask. Now, I don't know if three point nine two is gonna be tolerable on the other side of the house, but.
What did they say they're giving us, two point eight, two point?
Well, I think the, I, I mean, in general, every year, I think the, the target's two point five. Or lower, in a perfect world, I'm just, that's what the target is. So if we're at two point five or below, I'd say we can just stop and be done, but we're at the three point nine two. Uh, but that means that we're using a hundred percent of the S R money. Which is gonna put us at a bind next year. I mean, the, the bind's coming, the question is, is this next year or the year after? Right?
It's not gonna be this year.
So, so it's gonna be eighty, maybe eighty-one thousand, so if we split ARPA over two years? Yeah, because if we split the ARPA, that now puts our ask at five point six two. So just to dig into the nickels and dimes, do, do we really need to increase, tech supplies by sixty-seven percent, which sounds like a big number, but it's four thousand dollars?
If Kim were here.
She'd want more.
We have one-to-one devices and we don't have any money to.
But wanna throw some sort of buyback for all of those, like, what were they called, the owl cameras? That I think there's probably only one or two teachers that want to keep them, and then they bought all those screens.
We're hoping to mount those screens in the classrooms and use them.
Including the cameras and the projectors and all that?
Yes. Is there a cost savings in this next year's budget by doing the neurodiversity program as far as out of, out of district placements that will get absorbed, like people that we would potentially bring back? Right, if, if we bring a student back or two, it would give us some savings. Um, but basically it's just preventing others from going out, like, I can't, can't guarantee that.
It'd be difficult to budget that, though.
Right.
Without already having an agreement with the party that they're coming back, we shouldn't cut the budget.
Yeah, just thinking about like the rationale of using all of ARPA now to make the neurodiversity program start versus
What?
Next year.
You mean the S R?
Yeah, sorry.
Okay.
Yeah, I think the four thousand had to do with the maintenance costs, right?
That was in the budget last year and got cut. Tried to get it in the budget for this year, and that was one of the things that was the ask that got cut. I think it was, we actually were looking for seventeen thousand.
Aren't we talking about bulbs and pens and stuff, though?
Yep.
So is that part of the four thousand?
Yeah, it's, it's to, tech supply line in general is so abysmal.
Yeah, cause, well, cause some of the feedback at school council was that some of the projectors don't work, cause we don't have any bulbs. And the bulbs are very expensive, the pens for the smart boards are very expensive.
Yep.
We need replacement pens, so the technology we have isn't being utilized because it hasn't been maintained.
Correct, thank you.
When kids start paying for lunches again, does that go, what does that go to?
That just goes to the sustain the food program.
Okay, that's what I thought, but I wasn't, that's a good question. I heard that's kinda not much.
Yeah, I, I've heard both ways.
I know.
Are, are we, are we collecting enough receipts from the feds? Because, right, the feds are picking up that dime right now, the lunch program? We're not in deficit, are we?
I, I have not looked actually recently, but I, we shouldn't be. Although I think we were at the end of last year.
So it, I just looked at it, and we are in a deficit, however, she's waiting for two reimbursements to come in, so we really can't gauge. It, it's not as bad as it looks. It looks like twenty-nine thousand in the hole, however, she's still waiting for two.
So, so last year, I under, I remember us being in deficit, but it was, and it was because of this board, for all the right reasons, we kept staff fully en- employed even when the school was closed. But this year, we haven't had to shut the school down and pay folks to be home at all, so, you know, that piece isn't there to create the deficit. And are we having any? So last year, we also got one-time rural aid, rural school aid, or it was the first time that, that Norris actually got it?
Yep.
This year, yep.
We anticipated coming in next year because we don't have it as a receipt.
It's, it's hard to say, I mean, they didn't get it the previous year, so it's, depends on if they change their criteria. And, uh, or if our situation changes that no longer meets the criteria. Um, and then it depends on how many, you know, how many are in it, cause a couple of our schools that had always gotten it went way down in what they did get.
What do you charge for pre-k in your program? I'm just asking, does another school increase their fees considerably in order to have a, a larger revenue source? I mean, Julian, we are hoping that the neurodiversity program will be revenue source, but that's gonna take a few years to get out-of-district placement students from different districts and towns coming here, even for forty-five day placements.
So is there any other parts of the budget that we haven't already looked at that you might have been ultra conservative? Had it.
I mean, like, we could, we could maybe take a risk with the electric and take that down a little bit. I mean.
So ba- based, based on the, based on the adjustments that we already, nevermind.
So what's the plan with the, with the HVAC? We, who makes the decision on how long that runs and why?
I don't think we're, I don't think we're under a mandate to continue the twenty-four seven, that was under the state of emergency.
I didn't hear the question.
The, uh, twenty-four seven operation of the H V A C to maintain the air exchanges, I believe was required under the mandate.
Right.
Under the state of emergency, which has since been lifted.
We're thinking once the windows open, we were gonna not have them running twenty-four hours.
Right. So. We should put, yeah, we should probably talk about that as a bigger group. Just to make sure, I, I mean, I'm sure you've gotten feedback from everybody besides the school committee already, but.
Well, cause if you, if you ran it, uh, you know, like ninety minutes after end of day, ninety minutes before the day, that gets, I mean, we have it documented how many air exchanges that is. Exchanged all the air in an hour multiple times. And in one of the rooms, it was like a hundred times.
Right, but I, just, just to remind the committee, we put that procedure in place as a result of the emergency mandate under COVID, and we are under an agreement that any changes for COVID purposes need to be openly discussed in a public meeting with the collective bargaining unit.
Yeah, I'm not suggesting a change right now, I'm just tossing it out as like a potential impact to that line. And I'm not suggesting a certain course, I guess.
Okay. So, if, based on, on the cuts that, or the adjustments we already said, sixteen thousand dollars to adjust to two positions, the full use of the remaining.
Fourteen thousand.
No.
Not sixteen.
It's seven and nine, right?
Seven and nine, oh, I think they're both seven, okay.
The full use of the hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars of S R funds that remains, that we have, uh, next year and the year after to spend. And the, uh, And the uh. Open a prayer that will get a hundred and forty five thousand dollars of ARPA money. For the for twelve months. Leaves us at the three point nine percent. If we if we have to get to the two point five, we need to find another sixty seven, sixty nine thousand dollars worth of cuts. Which is the equivalent of a position.
You said it was sixty nine thousand down?
The difference between three point nine, two point five.
So that would be like going to what we do right now, keeping the library as a point two, not actually staffing the library position.
I would love to staff the library.
I know, right?
Right, so do you sacrifice, do you sacrifice the half of the math interventionist? I mean, from from my view, that's more. Tell administration, you you doesn't matter where it comes from, you gotta eliminate a position.
Right.
The equivalent of a position.
Yes, but if you come back, honestly, if you come back to and tell me you're pulling it out of utilities or somewhere else.
I know better, right, come on.
Then we should be doing that now.
Have you ever had a full time sub that could be in a library position where that way preps could still happen?
I have to see. I mean, are you allowed to do a full time sub for a position that you're posting?
It's more of a coverage.
You'd have to hire us and build it.
It would be a long term sub, which is.
If it was so and so's class who had library, that person could go into the classroom and they could be. Reading a book or doing a media lesson of some sort.
But when it's a long term sub, it's seventy percent of BA base, so it's still costing. A good chunk of money, it's not costing, you know, sixty eight thousand, but. And we were going to do that, but because of COVID, we.
Yeah, I know.
Couldn't get anybody to do it.
So. It's the the time. I'm gonna close public comment and feedback. Last chance to talk.
It does every year because we get so many ninth graders that apply.
Yeah, but the te- the town then takes Bobby's number and generally reduces it down to a number. But the but that's not in this number that I'm talking about.
Gotta add some shots at the regional.
All right, so I'll take a motion to close public comment or pu- uh, the public hearing portion of this meeting. Seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, public hearing is closed at six forty five. So now we can do any functions or further discussion if we want.
So since you're a dual enrollee and two different boards. If if we were to send the. Three point nine two. To the select board.
I'm listening.
I know you can't, you can't speak for them, but based on your experience there, I guess, what?
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna send it to finance, it's gonna go to finance, whatever we decide goes to finance, and then depending on. Uh, finance has its own threshold as to whether or not they're gonna request a joint session with the select board. If they do, that would be April seventh. I believe is the tentative placeholder.
I guess I'm wondering if it's worth going through that exercise, cuz we did that last year, I believe.
We did, but last year, didn't we ask for like twelve or fourteen percent?
Oh, no, we asked for, it was a more reasonable number, I think. Twelve makes me sweat a little bit.
I think what it whatever the committee as a whole feels comfortable with and is willing to stand up, articulate and defend is what should be sent. In a perfect world, I'd like to come in right at two point five because then it's smooth sailing, but if it's a little over. We ju- you just, there has to be an explanation and a story as to why to do it. I'll keep it now, keep in mind, I mean, this is asking for one point five from ARPA. We need to be crystal clear with the select board, you have the finance, that this is going to use up all the ESR funds. So that means next year's budget's already starting off at with a hundred and sixty three thousand dollar deficit.
I think that makes next year's number more palatable if we can get that. Three point nine now. Then we won't ask for, you know, a high number.
So then I, yeah, and do we know, do you know? What is the statewide or or within our five districts? What is the average um, cost spent per people?
I think it's, I'll say seventeen.
Little, yeah, like sixteen, eight.
I think you're a.
This would put us at twelve, and then there's the great debate about transportation. Whether we add that half a million in or not, but, okay. What's committee wanna do?
Just to, just to say that if you took the regional's. Space between two point five and one point seven four, you'd have three point two six percent between the two schools.
Every chance I get, I echo that into my colleague's ear over here. That cumulative, cumulative, the schools are at five percent. About next year, I'm.
Exactly, what are we gonna do next year?
That, and then what are we gonna do in two years? I'm, my numbers, we went out of school, that the two years, we're out of school of choice money, more or less. ESR money's gone, ARPA money's gone. That starts budget for twenty five, six hundred thousand dollars in all. Right, and also keep in mind in two years, both committee member Radon and myself will be off. You better get working, Mr. Chairman. But you're right, but that's, but we can't, we need to deal with the issue that's before us right now. And and we and we need to get behind the program. I mean, again, we haven't said this yet, but this is assuming that the whole committee is. Is buying into a hundred percent into the pitch of the neurodiversity program. Because if we weren't, then we shouldn't have it in the budget. Right, so, you know, we had the presentation and it seemed like everyone supported it, right? No one wants to pull it. So this is leaving that program in there. As well as restoring the librarian and increasing the math interventionist and restoring our nursing staff. Plus our.
Volunteer, but we don't know if we can because of COVID.
To meet, to meet the contractual obligations of the collective bar prep time and all that, which is why you went to a point two. Could you get a, could you get away with a a point eight, a four day a week librarian?
Yes.
You know, like a Monday through Thursday, I mean, to kind of ease, assuming you can find somebody to fill the spot, but. But but there again, where, you know, you're reducing. Sixty seven, sixty seven thousand by twenty percent. Another fourteen thousand. Something.
I think legally you can even put a para in there, but. Para can't teach the kids as far as library skills.
Library technology skills happening with a sub, a para or volunteer.
On a scale of one to ten, ten being most difficult, one being easy, the likelihood of finding a certified. Teacher with a master. Somebody that qualifies for a bit, a step one based masters scale. At at a at a point eight. Do you think that's likely to?
I think it's likely.
Yeah, I think you have bachelor's step one because a lot of new teachers are coming, elementary certified, well, teachers aren't short supply, but. Somebody looking for a job right out of college, they'll jump at that.
Right, so that's.
Can I say bachelor's base instead of bachelor's step one?
To get into seeing what schools are like, to see if you like the atmosphere.
Right.
So what is the salary of a ba- of a? Well, we need the number.
Twenty three, bachelor's base, sixty, nine sixty seven.
Sixty thousand, nine sixty seven?
Yep.
So let's just call that a reduction of twelve thousand. So we would budget that at forty eight, forty, forty eight, nine sixty seven? Which does what?
The sixty, nine sixty seven, that's for one point O, right?
Yeah, we say take it down additional twelve, take it down additional twelve and you subtract that, so forty eight, about forty nine thousand, under the sixty six. Well, I've got sixteen thousand already backed out, much more am I backing out? You're backing out another nineteen, seventeen? Thirty thirty three thousand?
Thirty three is the cost.
That's what we're backing out of the two posi- the librarian and the special ed teacher going from a step five down to a step one. The savings there cumulative.
And making the Splyberry Tech Bachelor's entry at a point eight.
That puts us at a. That puts us at a three point five eight. Well, three point five eight plus the high school comes in under the five. So. So Bobby, do you have, do you have all these notes and adjustments?
The last one, just review that last, what you were just saying.
So I've got cumulative of thirty three thousand reduction by making the librarian a bachelor's step one point eight. And the special ed teacher masters step one instead of a step five.
What? That thirty three thousand is just on the library position.
No.
Yes.
Yes.
Because the library was sixty six K at a master.
Oh, it's sixty thousand, nine sixty seven. Okay.
Okay.
For the.
It's sixty nine, sixty seven.
Six zero, nine six seven.
Right. And it was originally listed at sixty eight, six, what was it?
Seventy five, eight, one, three.
Seventy five, eight, one, three, right?
Sixty nine, sixty seven.
And and a point eight of that is forty eight, that was about forty nine, it's forty eight, nine, sixty seven.
Yep, forty eight, nine, sixty seven.
That's the BA point eight number? So that's twenty seven thousand, so yes, that's correct, and my apologies.
You're right. Okay, so to repeat. Changing the librarian to a BA step one point eight.
Is it step one or base?
What number did you give me? Base, a BA base, point eight, librarian.
And then it includes the.
And the special ed teacher new position that was budgeted at a step fi- a master step five. Reset to masters. Base or step one, base? Then we allocate a hundred percent of the remaining ESR funds, which is a hundred and sixty three thousand. Six hundred and eighty six dollars, twenty four cents. We, we're we're putting in here a hundred and forty five thousand dollars of ARPA money. So that, so we have to be clear on that as a source. Gets us to. A five million, forty thousand, five hundred and forty dollars for a three point five eight percent. Ask for year over year.
I'd like to make a motion to approve that.
So motion made? Is there a second? Seconded discussion?
We're close, but. What happens if they reject it, that finance and say, no, you're one point over percent over? Do we have to go back to the drawing board? Like, what do we, I forget what happens when they say no?
I think once it leaves us, it goes to the finance, they'll pine on it. And then they send their recommendation to the select board. We had this discussion last year, whether our, whether ours has actually voted on first or not, I forgot. Edward? What's the process? If we if we send this to finance at a three point five eight percent ask and finance says, you gotta be three point four. Does finance, can finance send it back to the school committee and ask us to find additional cuts?
Well, let me remind you what happened last year. Is, I mean, you're going for, well, what if it's three point four, or what is, the recommendation's two point five? I'm gonna re- remind you, last year, it was so high that the select board actually reduced it, but it was down. Basically, it was under my recommendation for. What it was, and I think it was under one percent.
Correct.
And then that's what's gonna go to the town meeting, doesn't go back to the school committee at all.
If you can get three select board members to agree with your recommendation.
Right, ex- exactly. So it becomes somewhat ambigu- ambiguous.
So I think if if the committee votes for this, then, you know, you guys don't have to call me, but I think you should be hammering away at the other four select board members. You know, and explaining why the, why this budget needs to pass and why they need the support, a hundred and forty five thousand dollars from the ARPA to make it happen. Or to, at this point, we could end up with another point one, and then we're doing an emergency meeting and we're issuing pink slips. Because there there is no other fat in this system. Other discussion?
I, I mean, I think one of the selling. I mean, thanks to Hampshire Regional, we can meet five. And, you know, that, I have to imagine was. So to speak, and the work of people trimming that so that it wasn't as big of a increase as well.
I think we remind them at like what the percentage last year that we were given. The increase, I mean, this is.
And then the next step.
Besting in the next.
Right, and then the next step would be if if we if we're not successful at the select board, then you turn out town meeting with the parents and vote down the budget.
Okay.
Um, I mean, I think it it's. We're trying to control down the road costs. Which, you know, if we're trying to bail out the ship, we need a bigger bucket at this point, so this kind of gives us that.
Yeah.
There's other things that we could probably do, like if we. Think through this year, but right now we have to approve something. I think this puts us in a position to control downstream costs, but maybe, you know, in an ideal world, we would be able to. Bring some of our students back home, which would, I think, be beneficial socially for them and also. Uh, monetarily for the budget.
Yeah. And revenue generating forty five day placement. All right.
Other discussion? All right, we'll vote, all in favor? Aye, opposed? Passage unanimously. So Bobby, I think because in here, we we were putting in the revenue source of the one forty five with the ARPA. That there, that should be spelled out like in a cover letter, because without that one forty five, it's really a six and a half percent ask.
I'll uh, put something together and run it by you.
Sure. That's the sole item on our agenda. Anything else? There a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. We're adjourned at seven oh two. So moved. We're adjourned at seven oh two.